I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to this joint meeting between the Rutherford County School Board, City of Merschbrooke School Board, and our state legislators. At this time, I'd like Mr. Aaron Holliday to lead us in the pledge, please.
Stand.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to start out by saying I appreciate the opportunity for other legislators to come join us tonight. And this is, I've been on board nine years, and to my knowledge, this is the first time we've ever had anything like this, other than our opportunity, we get to come to Nashville and meet with you. And I would like to say, in a public manner, that the delegation we've got, all five of you are big supporters of education for Rutherford County. And I think that's a big part of our success within the county, and I'm sure the City of Merschbrooke says the same thing. Let me just introduce our legislators here. We've got Senator Jim Tracy, Representative Joe Carr, Representative Mr. Rick Womack, State Senator Bill Ketchum, Representative Mike Sparks. Glad all of you are here. I'd like to introduce my board, and then I think Ms. Wade will introduce hers, and we'll let the directors make a few comments. We've got Mr. Aaron Holliday over here on the left, Mr. David Nipper, Mr. Corey Young, Vice Chairman Mr. Wayne Blair, Mr. Tim Tack, Ms. Helen Blankenship. And Ms. Wade, you want to say a few words, introduce your board?
It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you the greatest school board in the city. That's it. I'm sorry to hear, and ask that, please stand so everybody can get a good look at you. Dr. Andy Brown, Mrs. Nancy Phillips, Mrs. Nancy Rehne, and Mr. Jared Barrett. Thank you so much. And if you don't mind, we have our wonderful, we call her our angel, our attorney, Mrs. Kelly Bates. Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Dr. Gilbert, would you like to say a few words?
I just want to thank you very much for being here tonight. I want to thank you for the privilege of coming together. I have tremendous respect for Mr. Odom and the job that he's done. We've been friends a long time, and it's a real pleasure for us to work together. We have a very collaborative relationship, and I appreciate that very much. And to our senators and to our representatives, we thank you for listening to us. We thank you for understanding that children are our primary concern, care, love, and that they come first in our lives and in every decision that we make, and we thank you for making that so in your lives also.
I join with Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Hodge also. Thank you for coming, taking time this evening to be with us. It is about the boys and girls of Rutherford County, Merschbrooke City. That's why we exist, and that's what we're here for tonight. But again, thank you for listening to some of our concerns, and we can get some of your feelings. Always appreciate the dialogue. You've always welcomed when we would give you a call, or we needed some assistance at the state level. All of you have responded very quickly to us, so I thank you very much for that.
Thank you. One person I failed to mention, County Commissioner Jeff George is back here with us. He's a big supporter of health and ed in Rutherford County, so I wanted to make sure we got him recognized. The way we're going to do this, I think, is we, the county board members and the city both sent questions to everyone, just to give you, I guess, a little heads up on what we're looking for, some answers. So, the Rutherford County Board, what we basically did is broke our questions up by individuals, basically be asking them. And I think Ms. Wade is going to probably do the same thing. What I'd like to see, if it's okay, whoever's got the first question, we'll start with Senator Tracy, and maybe spend 30 seconds to a minute on, you know, what your views are on it, each one of you. Then we'll go to the second question, and we'll go Representative Carr to start it off, okay? And after we get through all the questions, maybe the last 15 minutes, we may just have a general comment section. You know, just more or less, it'll be a learning session for us, since hopefully y'all have a lot of answers we're looking for, I guess you could say. So, to start things off, I'm going to have Board Member Aaron Holliday. I think he's got the first question on the county school board. Mr. Holliday?
Last year, proposed Senate Bill 2210 and House Bill 2348 would have increased the BEP funding component for teachers by about $3,500 per BEP position. However, those bills would have funded this $3,500 increase by increasing five students per teacher in K through eight classrooms. We understand that the bills would have been revenue neutral across the state, but the increased K through eight class size in the BEP formula would have cut the state funding for 200 K through eight teaching positions in Rutherford County schools. If a similar proposal was brought forward this year, we would have these same concerns of increased class sizes and the effects they would have on education. Until we would grow by some 5,000 students with an increased class size, there would not be the opportunity for us to add teaching positions in response to the increasing population here in Rutherford County. If this type of legislation is brought this year, what would we anticipate your response to be?
Well, let me answer that. I guess I probably know too much about this bill, because I met with Dr. Gilbert and folks from Rutherford County about this legislation last year, and probably was instrumental, and it wasn't going any further than what it did last year. I think the intent of the bill, let me just say, the intent was to allow local flexibility. And I'm all for letting local flexibility. I think there were some things about the bill that was not taken into consideration. So, I haven't heard anything about this legislation coming up. I've encouraged the Department of Ed to meet with the superintendents, if they're interested in doing something like this coming up, to meet and get your opinion on it before they run this out. I think last time they got, the intent was good, I just don't think many times in legislation, sometimes you don't know what the fine print's going to do, and the intent was to give you flexibility, but it was harder to follow through with, I'll just put it that way. So, that's where we are today. I hadn't heard anything about that, and from, coming from the department on this legislation from last year. But I'm going to encourage them to meet with educators across the state before they move forward. And I know we've got a state representative that's a former school superintendent. He and I met on this legislation quite a bit during last year's session, and I know he's going to be involved in it. He's a former superintendent from East Tennessee. That answers your question.
I understand. Dr. Gilbert, this was the bill that you and I met in my office, was it not?
Right.
I'm sorry, I have a question, so I'm trying to recite from memory a little bit. I want to concur with what Senator Tracy said. Dr. Gilbert came up, and we spent quite a bit of time, and I apologize, but who was the gentleman that was with you?
Gary Anderson.
Thank you very much. And quite honestly, this is one of those bills that was with great intent, because it was, as Senator Tracy was saying, it was going to give what we thought was the LEA some flexibility about how allocate resources. Unfortunately, it was going to have the unintended consequence of, I think, reducing teachers in the Merschbrooke system by almost 50 teachers. Was that the number?
Yeah, a little more.
Yeah, so I'm trying to remember here, because it was a couple of conversations we had. So, as subsequent to that, I and some others had some conversations with the department heads in the education, governor's administration, saying, you know what, we need to kind of walk this through a little bit, because while the intent is laudable and noteworthy, where I think we're, we need to spend a little more time on the unintended consequences. And it was because of those conversations, and some others, there were a lot of people involved in that, that we were pulled back. And I think, I don't know what they're going to do with that this year, Dr. Gilbert, Superintendent Odom, I haven't heard anything. I would dare say that if they proceed, they're going to proceed, taking the considerations, their unintended consequences you brought to us, and serious consideration. If they don't do that, I would imagine they'll be in the same situation.
I have a feeling that probably Mr. Odom and I will be calling you.
I would expect you to call me regardless, but I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. Gilbert, you called me as well, and I know Aaron Holliday and Wayne Blair also contacted me. I just want to encourage you to keep up that process, because the first time I heard about the bill and the consequences of that legislation was when you contacted me. And then we talked and found out what this was about, what was going on, and of course, we all opposed it. But there is so much that comes through up there. If you're, I'm on judiciary and consumer employer affairs. That was in education. We have no idea what's going through education unless you're on that committee. So, please, kind of jump on the bandwagon with Senator Tracy and Representative Carr, but just, my point is, keep us informed. When you hear anything that is going to affect the school systems, teachers, facilities, we probably don't know about it. We need to know about it, and we need your input and your recommendations. Thank you.
As previously discussed, this bill was actually brought by the governor, and the governor withdrew the bill, because he felt like that it was premature, and he wanted to put together a task force made up of stakeholders around the table. I think that you may see the bill come back this next year, as on what he found out from those stakeholders. Like previously stated, until we gain 5,000 new students in K through eight, it's not going to happen, because the formula's not there to provide the funding, you know, for future funding. I mean, that's just as plain as it is. And I don't think that you'll be able to go back to the county commission, and they're willing to step up the funding. That's not going to happen either. The $500,000 drop would be, in the ongoing funding, would be due to losing the health insurance funding for 200 K through eight positions. So, I think it's a wait and see. If you want to see if it's coming back, I don't know. The governor, right now, is starting all of his budgeting. He's calling all the commissioners in at this point, and will work through the 1st of January. I haven't heard anything, and I don't think the rest of the delegation will, as either. We'll find out a little bit more as we get closer to Christmas.
I just think Representative Womack mentioned, you know, I kind of see a disconnect sometimes in the legislature. Being a freshman, I see folks that are strong voices for, whether it's the concrete industry, road builders, or health, or whatever. It just seems like some of these folks are very effective, that are advocates, lobbyists, whatever you want to call it. They let them know what's been heard, and I know you've got a good working with Wayne Blair. He lets me know what it is, you know, how he feels about issues. I would just keep that communication going, and I know, I kind of lean towards, like Senator Carr and Senator Tracy, since they're on education committees, and kind of follow their lead, and kind of follow what, hopefully, they're on board right now.
Ms. Wade?
I'll call Mrs. Nancy Rehne.
One of, I think, both boards' questions probably is whether or not you are for or against school vouchers, and your reasons why you are for or against.
I'll go first, since everybody's sitting there. That's an interesting question, Ms. Rehne, because we were having a somewhat, part of the conversation at dinner, and I think, from a personal standpoint, that premature question, until we had the discussion about what kind of education system do we want in Tennessee? And do we want to move forward with the existing model that basically removes the formula for vouchers, or charter schools, or any other type of choice available, especially to those kids who find themselves trapped in a failing school or school system? And so, that's the discussion, quite honestly, at the state level, and particularly on the House Education Committee, that we're not having. And so, we're talking a lot about process, and Dr. Brown, when we were having this conversation, so we're talking a lot about process. And I think process is important, but process loses its context unless we have a method or a model by which that process is supposed to find itself. So, if we, as a state, want to implement a model that allows for choice and allows for competition, then obviously vouchers and charter schools need to be discussed within that context. If we don't want choice and competition, we want a more closed system, which is somewhat like we have now, then the question answers itself. And so, my, the answer to that is, if we choose vouchers, what is it, or we choose charter schools, what is it that we're undoing? What is the unintended consequence of that? And too many times, especially in education, we have great ideas with laudable intent, yet find ourselves dealing with the unintended consequences of a good idea that was lawful. And that's the concern I have. I will tell you, and be quite frank with you, I am for, I am for choice and competition. I think they're good things. But implementing choice and competition in an education model that hasn't seen it in 30 or 40 years, it's not something you can do by the flipping on of a switch, because what you end up doing by implementing that process, you create a whole host of unintended consequences. So, I would say, I am for vouchers, but not within the current construct of what we have as an education model. We need to step back and define the model we want, and find out, the voucher or charter process, how can that be implemented with the least amount of unintended consequences? I think the jury is still out even on the charter schools. We're waiting to kind of see how that goes right now. The governor feels very strong about charter schools. I have visited several charter schools, one particularly in Nashville, very successful. And I think there's a place for charter schools. Vouchers, this is something that I think you'll find that will split the entire community pretty much right down the middle. I can see both sides of the issue of vouchers. But talking to several Christian schools in my district, those leaders in those Christian schools, they do not want vouchers, because they do not want the state to come in and dictate to them how to run their schools, and what rules and regulations they have to follow according to the state. They fall under separate rules, and I can understand that. So, even the Christian schools, if we're looking at vouchers to go expand not only to different public schools, but to private schools, these private schools, right now, it's 100% against vouchers, at least here in Tennessee, at least in my district. So, in this case, I'll listen to my constituents, and if my private schools say they don't want it, then that'll be the way I would vote. I would not even look at entertaining the idea of vouchers right now. Again, as Representative Carr said, a lot of things can change over the next 10, 15, 20, 25 years. But I think the charter schools are good, at least the direction we're going with them. And I don't think vouchers, we need to even entertain the idea right now with vouchers.
I don't, I don't have, and have not made, my opinion on vouchers at this point. There's still a lot of research to do, and I used to serve on the Senate Education, haven't been there in the last two years. We were just beginning to talk about vouchers at that time, and I don't think it's progressed any further than that over the last two years. And it kind of comes in the same vein of charter schools, you know, what Representative Womack and Representative Carr were talking about. Charter schools is a, it's not an either-or issue, and that's the way that I want to approach it, because what we really need is to refocus on how do we best educate kids? And as educators know, that all students don't earn the same way. What we do know of how we have been operating in some districts, haven't been working. So, I'm open to looking at new ways. Several years ago, Jim and I went to, with Senator Harper, down to the Kipp School in Nashville, and looked at the program. Wow. I was blown away of how their scores had just improved into a poverty-stricken neighborhood over in East Nashville. So, like I say, it's not an either-or issue, but my focus in the legislature is how do we provide options for students to get the end result? Charter schools, it's a, it's not a private charter school, it would be a public charter school, which school boards, the LEA, still have control. They set, they set the curriculum of charter schools, and still have control of the lower side of those charter schools, just as they have in Memphis. I think there are eight new charter schools coming into Memphis city schools, and you have parents lined up waiting list, because of the emphasis and where the scores are going. So, as we work together with your all's input, before we don't have one in Rutherford County at this point, but my end result is how we best educate the kids.
My response, my first response, makes me, this is a free-market kind of thinker, would be, it's the parents' money, it's the taxpayers' money, let them choose the school. But then I hear them educators that say, it'll lead to more impoverished school, and that's where, like Representative Carr was talking, unintended consequences that I'd be concerned with, that, you know. Then again, that's where I have to look back at the school board and see where, I know where, Mr. Blair, his opinion on this, he shared it with me countless times on it, but I think there might be a place for, you know, and I know the House, Wayne does this wrong about it, but, you know, I hate to be the rebel in the room sometimes, but, you know, I do think that education needs to be fixed, and I do think there needs to be some reforms, and there needs to be some changes for the positive, you know. And I hate to look at DC and New York as a model, not that you don't look at them as an example, but look at them, that's our nation's capital, that system is just flat broke. Nobody wants to emulate the nation's capital with $18,536 per pupil spending. So, I think there's areas that we need to look at some of these things, but I think our representatives and our senators look heavily towards the school board, and look heavily towards teachers that call us, you know, teachers that call us. And I can vouch for these guys. Our folks are always, always listening to educators. I think sometimes we get a little bit of a bad rap sometimes, but I do feel that level of teachers should call the representatives a little bit more, let their, let their own voice be heard, they'll know that one will speak for them, let them speak for themselves.
Let me go with the charter schools first. Let me explain a little bit about charter schools, just so everybody will know what we're talking about. As Senator Ketchum pointed out, we've had the opportunity to visit, we visited Kipp in Nashville, and I spent, last year, I went to Memphis and spent all day and visited three or four different charter schools down there. First of all, charter schools is no panacea. I mean, they're public schools, they're all different. They do provide flexibility, and I'll give you some examples. Like Kipp, where Senator Ketchum and I visited, if I remember right, they start school at 7:00 in the morning, they go to 5:00 in the afternoon. They have a half a day on Saturday, many times, for these young people. Each parent that sends their son or daughter to these charter schools signs a affidavit, signs a contract with the school, and each teacher that has those students has to do an in-home visit with each one of those students, and meets the parent, or parents, and tells them. So, it gives flexibility hour-wise, flexibility curriculum-wise. They are charter, they're charter schools, but they are public schools. There's some misconception, I think, the way I understand the law, it just, it's another tool in the toolbox. I don't think charter schools are going to just pop up all over the place. It has to be approved by the LEA. They are under the umbrella of the LEA, unless they turn them down, I think twice, and then it goes to the State Board of Education. That's what happened in some situations in Tennessee, but that's what it's designed to do. Charter schools are designed to take people the way they are today. These are failing schools, students that are in failing schools today, and been failing schools for a number of years. And so, that's what it's designed to do. Charter schools are not for everybody. I see that they will be more focused on academic roles, and maybe a STEM charter schools. They're similar to magnet schools, and we're familiar with magnet schools, similar. You can be a little more flexible, I think, with magnet schools, and that's what charter schools should be designed to do. That's the charter school legislation. We've, we've done that, we'll see how that works. They can fail. And in Memphis and Nashville, those charter schools can be closed. If they're not meeting the guidelines, and they don't make the test scores, you can close those charter schools, and they've done it. And they've done it in Memphis, and they've done it in Nashville. All the ones that I've visited over the last eight years, they all vary. They're all different. Some of them have uniforms, some of them don't have uniforms, some of them have, but it all comes back down to good leadership, whether you've got good principals and good teachers. So, those are important things. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. That's on charter schools. Number two, you wanted to ask about vouchers. Let me tell you where we are on vouchers. There's a certain legislature, legislator that's very interested in this legislation. He wanted to move forward with it last year. The governor said, no, we want to study the issue. Where we are right now, we are in the process of hearing from the task force. He put together a committee, and they heard from all different aspects of the vouchers or school choice, or whatever you want to call it, there's all kinds of names. And that's where we are today. I haven't seen the report from that committee. I don't, I want to see. Joe points out very well, it's a, it's a large change. If we're going to do some things, it's got to be done very specifically, so I want to see how it's going to be done. I want to look and see what it's been done, how it's been done in other states. You know, I think there's other states that tried this. I want to see how it's done, I want to see how it's implemented, how it works, and those kinds of things. I mean, there's a lot of questions about it before we move forward on it, in my opinion. I think there's a lot more questions than there are answers at this present time. And your input's very vital, as we've talked about, you're going to, as you, as we move through this legislation, whatever legislation is, whether it's charter schools or whatever, stay in touch with us on the, if those of us, whoever's on the education committee, because it takes five votes to get it out of the committee in the Senate, in the House, how many, y'all got on committee in the House?
We've got 16 on full.
So, you've got to get nine votes. You've got to get nine votes to get it out of the House Education Committee, full Education Committee. So, those kinds of things, the impact is, needs to be known. So, I think that answers the question.
Thank you.
Mr. Trump? I adopted your interest this year to serve on the BEP 2.0 committee. We actually finished it yesterday, and so, this is the question I'm about to ask, will actually be number two on that, I think, out of four prioritized items. And it deals with insurance reimbursement, and the question is, state insurance reimbursement for certified teachers are paid over a 10-month school year, and then districts are required to fund the district in months. And we're just kind of asking, is there any possibility that the state might help us pick up the other two months, if we cannot just pay for 10 months on the teachers' insurance? And that was the question.
I think you were on that board yesterday, so I think that's the recommendation from the BEP board, for us to pick that up. What we don't know is what happens after the election. If Obamacare goes into play, there's no way. There is no way. It's unsustainable. We will not be able to afford anything. It may be, we're hearing numbers right now, that may put us at $700 million, that the state's portion of Obamacare.
Next year.
Next year, that we have to come up with. So, depends on the election next week, or two weeks, 10 days, whatever it is. We're bracing for that. We're moving in that direction, because this, this thing goes live 2014, January 1 of 2014. January 1 of 2013, we have to be 25% structured. And if we're not structured, the governor, on the 17th of November, has to tell Sebelius, Secretary of Health, that we have to be prepared, and we are either going to elect it or not elect it. If we choose to opt out of Obamacare on the 17th of November, then the government, the federal government, comes in and takes it over and starts running again. If we choose to opt in and go with it, we still have until we come back in January. I'm just not sure that the votes are there.
And one thing, another caveat to that is, if we decide not to set up our own exchange as a state, the federal government has the authority to come in and do it. The only problem is, the federal government, when they passed the law two years ago, didn't fund their portion to come in and set it up. So, we could very easily say, no, we're not doing it, and then there's still no exchange, but they don't have the money to come into the state, any state, to set up the exchange. And that's another thing some of us are looking at, is saying...
And that's another thing some of us are looking at, is saying, no to the exchange, you come do it, what, what, you don't have the money, then you can't implement Obamacare in Tennessee. So there, it's like Senator Kepner said, there's gonna be a lot of variables and, that we won't know of how they're gonna play out till the election is over with and even after the election for months. So it's gonna be an interesting time and...
Superintendent Odom, I'm not, I'll be a little more direct without getting into the healthcare debate, I don't think it's likely, uh, whether, um, we have to establish an exchange or not, that we'll pass that, just to be candid. We've got a very tight budget and from the information that we have, it'd be about a sixty-million-dollar item. And quite honestly, the state legislature's gonna be concerned about what can we do to make sure that our local schools are consistently and fully funded? And that would be, that's gonna be a priority because we are now starting to see some deep decrease in revenues back, back to the state, they're on the decline again, you know, through the first part of the year, the middle part of the year, we were on up surge for the last two, two reporting cycles, two or three reporting cycles that we missed. So we've gotta anticipate that, um, funds are gonna be limited and I know it's not what you wanna hear, but I think you wanna hear an honest answer and not just a fairy tale answer, and an honest answer is, it's not likely.
Yeah, and I'll answer that too, to follow up with Joe, I think that, I think what the stakeholders need to do, and I'm talking about the superintendent association, school board association and other stakeholders, um, as you well know, I was involved in the BEP two-point-zero we did, and I know how hard it is to adjust. And I agree, I mean, with my background being on school board, that is an issue, that I think it comes down to priorities. And when we start going through the budget, I would recommend the stakeholders, uh, to come to us as we move through this process, through the budgetary process and prioritize your issues and, you know, we'll try to go with it as much as you can. It is an issue, it's been an issue, I know since, probably forever, probably, I know since the mid-nineties. So I think Joe's right, it'd be very difficult to do this unless you give up something else and that means, uh, the priorities of the educational folks, all the stakeholders in education. So I, it's always a concern to do it and it does put a burden on y'all, I understand that, but as funds come in, it's gonna be difficult, I think.
I'll see you in the trial.
Uh, we've already discussed the charter schools and school vouchers, so I'm going to skip to our third question. During the past year, the evaluation system has reviewed, uh, has been reviewed and while some changes were made by the Department of Education, it was thought that additional changes would be forthcoming from the legislature. For example, some people feel that expectations, which is one of the measures that we use to evaluate teachers, should be sufficient to grant tenure. Do you see additional changes coming forward from the legislature and the evaluation system?
Let me answer that one. Uh, to answer it real quick, I'd say yes. Uh, let, and let's go through the history of the evaluation program, just so folks will know what it's all about. It came about through the race to the top, first to the top money that we receive from federal government, that was part of the stipulation to do evaluations and evaluate teachers. When Governor Haslam took office, the federal government notified the governor's office, said, look, you know, you haven't implemented evaluation program, you gotta have it implemented in three or four months and it's gotta be implemented next school year or you're gonna lose your fund. So they implemented very quickly. Uh, I'm gonna try to answer this the correct way. I was involved with it last year quite a bit, I do think we've made some changes, I think there's gonna be further changes made. Uh, there's several of us legislators that are talking about it and we would like to hear feedback from y'all. I think it's better this year than it was last year, I think it, we can make it better. And, uh, I have some opinions on it. At the end of the day, I think we can come to some conclusions that there will be some changes and I would love to get feedback from y'all, I, I get feedback from all over the state, from different LEAs, from different principals and friends of mine that are in education, so I don't back off from doing that. I do think evaluations are here to stay, I, I think they need to be fair and efficient, they don't need to be overwhelming to teachers. Uh, we all know in this room that the most important thing in education is the best teacher we can have in that classroom. Principals are important, but that teacher has more contact with those students than anyone. And that's the goal of the evaluation program. It's not, it shouldn't be, I think it was rolled out so fast that it came out where it was a punishment, it shouldn't be a punishment. There's some things in it that I am not happy about yet. I think, uh, there's a group that's working on it, I think they've listened to us somewhat, um, and I'll stop there. So I think I appreciate that question, though I think it's an excellent question that people are concerned about across the state.
Without repeating what Senator Tracy said, I wanna pick up where, what he was talking about. I didn't realize, um, to the full extent, uh, that Rutherford County and Murksborough schools is really are really good schools. And, uh, and I say that because, um, I've been in contact, I've had several principals contact me over the last several months about this issue up around, several. And I, I gotta tell you, I was more than a little frustrated with the question because I didn't know how to answer the question, 'cause it's an extremely complicated, uh, and complex issue about evaluation and implementation of evaluation and these kind of things. And so there's a lot of frustration on my part about how to answer a question that I felt incapable of answering. So I reached out to Stephen Smith, who's Deputy Commissioner on Policy and Legislation, 'cause I've gotten, being on the education committee, I've gotten to know Stephen. And I said, Stephen, I said, look, I'm candidly, I'm a little bit in over my head when these principals and these teachers are asking me very detailed questions, they're quite passionate, they're very knowledgeable and they care. And I said, I'm, you guys gotta be a resource. He said, Joe, we will come down and meet with any principal or any group of teachers anytime. And I took him up on his offer. So I had two principals from Rutherford County Superintendent Odom that contacted me and they, we met at Cracker Barrel for two hours. And, you know, I, I got, I just said, I did the introductions, the hoot and howdy, and I just sat back and I got an education. And I was absolutely thrilled at the way that both of these groups, Stephen Smith, the Department of Education, reports directly to Commissioner Huffman and this principal and the staff, and they got together and, and this principal asked some tough questions, he asked some really tough questions and the department wasn't the least bit defensive. So the takeaway for me in that was, in, in addition to get a lot of education about how we're evaluating our teachers and our schools and knowing that Rutherford County and Murksborough are doing a splendid job, was that there is a resource there that you can access through your delegation, which is one of the reasons Superintendent Odom and Dr. Gilbert, I, I wanted us to have this meeting, was to let you guys know, you reach out to us, we could put something like that together on pretty short notice. They wanna hear from you. The feedback they're getting from that principal, they're gonna implement in the form of corrective legislation, they're gonna propose, they could have two or three things, they're gonna say, that's a good idea, we need to do that. So again, the takeaway is, there's an opportunity there, they wanna hear from you, they know it's not perfect, they, they want you on board, uh, they need you, uh, just engage them and you can do that through us or them directly, I'm sure. Well, thank you.
Dr. Brown, as a former teacher, the evaluation system is a passion of my own. And I guess it's been September, October, and the first year it was implemented in such short notice, I started receiving phone calls from teachers and principals. My kids are and were in the public school at that time. So I started, I visited over a dozen schools just in my district alone, high schools, middle schools, elementary schools. And the teacher evaluation system, the shortcomings, it really ended up being three main areas. The grading system, specifically twos and fours that aren't defined, the number of evaluations required per year, and then the thirty-five percent quantitative portion that was accounted for by testing in math and English, when you have teachers that didn't teach it, they had to accept the overall school score, those needed to be addressed. I met with Commissioner Huffman and he was under a lot of pressure at that time to get this thing implemented, as Senator Tracy said, because get it done or lose the money. In government, you don't wanna lose that money. I don't necessarily agree with that all the time, but that was our situation. So he wouldn't budge. That's okay, I'm gonna file legislation. And I did. And it addressed in a very primitive form those three issues. But it, my intent was really not to pass legislation, my intent was to get the governor's attention as well as Commissioner Huffman, so let's make some changes to it, because they're the ones and the state school board that could make those changes. And matter of fact, the governor called me to his office twice and I sat down and met with him and we came to an agreement that this would be looked at and studied and, as most of you know, and as Dr. Gilbert and Superintendent Odom attended, we had SCORE come down and do a roundtable to get input from all of our teachers just in Rutherford County. That was another prerequisite I had, that, you know, we needed to be involved here in Rutherford County. It was a great session, it was very productive and SCORE has done a lot to contribute. There's two models, you know, the team model and then the tiger model. The team model developed very, very quickly by fifteen member committee of bureaucrats, businessmen, teachers and principals versus the tiger model being developed by multiple school systems and teachers and principals across the state of Tennessee. And all I've heard from the tiger model is praise, 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 and all I've heard from the team model is negative, negative, we don't like it, it isn't working. And Superintendent Odom and I were just talking tonight about this, that there's a way to convert possibly Rutherford County schools to the tiger model, but that's another whole issue. But the, the point is, what did get accomplished in the compromise where I withdrew the legislation was, we went from four evaluations a year to technically two, but it can count as one, one visit. The thirty-five percent quantitative portion will be reduced to twenty, or to ten percent, the other twenty-five percent can be used for the testing or the teachers' evaluation. And a promise that the twos and fours on the evaluation would be explained in greater detail as, as to how, how to evaluate by the evaluators. I, I still don't agree with that, I think teachers are still comparing and I just met with several of them last week at the Smyrna, uh, Smyrna primary. They look at it as five, four, three, two, one, A, B, C, D, F. When I was in the military, we used to have the, on officer performance reports, five, four, three, two, one, they figured out long ago it didn't work, so we went to meets expectations or doesn't, or meets standards does not meet standards. And that was my suggestion to the governor and Commissioner Huffman, was we go, we do not meet standards with the one on the rubric, meets standards is the three, and exceeds standards for tenure purposes is the five. And you eliminate this, this animosity among our teachers, five, four, three, two, one, comparing As, Bs, Cs and Fs. So there's a lot of room left for improvement still with this team model. The key with the whole, if, if both school systems decide to stay with team, is to continue to give us the input, because it's gonna take years to get this thing changed the way you want it. And we've, I think we did a lot this year, I know we accomplished a lot with SCORE, um, but there's still gonna be a lot of work left to do if both systems, both districts decide to stay with the teams, team model.
My comments about the system, Dr. Brown, is I think we'll continue, it'll be just a growing process, we'll continue to tweak the evaluation system. You know, as society, nobody likes change. Everybody likes it the way that it was, everybody thinks that, that if it's not broken, don't fix it, you hear that all the time. But many times, uh, it's not just here in Rutherford County, in Crowe, Rutherford County, but I, I represent up, while I do up until November, uh, Murray County, Marshall County and Lincoln County, some of those districts are not as fortunate as the ones that we have here. Uh, and it is broken in some of those systems. And I, I'm sure in some of our, our more rural counties across the state, um, it was even more broken. But that change has come and I think everybody, the teachers that I've talked to have accepted it and they like it now. Uh, but I think we'll continue to, our delegation will continue to listen, um, and take back those changes. I think we got the governor's ear last year, uh, in a very short order, that, uh, this thing was wrong and they, they tweaked it very quickly, um, because we were hearing, we were getting bombarded from, from the teachers, uh, with their evaluation of the evaluation system. Where I do think that, that I would like to see a major tweaking would be in, in special education teachers. I think that the evaluation, um, criteria should be different in special education, that's my opinion. I don't think it's fair to evaluate special, uh, teachers. Many times in, in, uh, one of my counties, Marshall County, special ed, special ed teacher, she spends all of her time filling out the government forms and doesn't have time to teach, so she has to get an assistant to come in and do her teaching because the assistant's not allowed to fill out the federal forms. It's not fair to, for her to be evaluated based on the same criteria as a regular classroom teacher. So, uh, this will be one of my...
Well, before we move on there, I wanted, you...
Well, I was just gonna say real quick, it, it reminds me of what other people in the private industry are saying about excessive compliance, it's, it's almost like saying excessive compliance of all, all teachers. I hear that teachers are more comfortable with it and I hear that sometimes they can't wait to retire, so I hear both, both sides. If it's okay, I'd like to get your thoughts, Dr. Brown, but your thoughts on, on evaluation?
Well, uh, I think it needs to be a process where we can evaluate teachers fairly, okay? I think we all agree that we want the best possible teachers in our system and we want to reward those teachers. I think it needs to be a system where it does not interfere with the time that the teachers and principals or the evaluators could be spending with their students. And I think the question about, uh, whether tenure can be graduated, uh, or can be given based on the current evaluation system is a question that needs to be answered.
Uh, I just wanna make a point, Dr. Brown, that there's, uh, just for everybody that's listening, you can go to the department's website and they're taking, recommending, I think you can see a lot of the recommendations, I just written down three, uh, lowering the value-added weight for teachers in non-tested grades, that's one, that's one thing that's being recommended.
Twenty-five percent.
Allowing, uh, teachers who receive four or five on the value-added portion, uh, use that for a hundred percent of their evaluation, uh, removing the prohibition on using special ed student data and teachers' effect data. So those are some suggestions that's being tossed around, I, I would recommend you go to the department's website and look at that. And feedback to us if there's gonna be some legislation, uh, there's been a long, I think, Dr. Brown, you made all good points and that's our goal to see that, uh, to try to, one, one of the good things that's come out of it, collaboration between the teachers, I hear that all over the state, that all of a sudden you had teachers that were teaching beside each other for many years, they didn't talk to one another to give them ideas on how to do it, now they're, that is a positive thing, I mean, many schools are doing it, but there were some that were not, so just wanna point that out.
In nineteen ninety-four, the BET, BEP formula allocated twenty million dollars in first pupil funding to school districts. Because that amount has not increased to reflect the student enrollment growth, the actual ADM funding has declined. In the school year twenty fourteen, fifteen, the Common Core settlements must be given online for grades six through twelve, and there is a trend to go to online textbooks. But two questions are, would the legislature consider an increase in funding for technology to meet the infrastructure challenges? And what are the plans for funding iPads or other electronic devices so that the students can complete multiple online assessment per year for the partnership or assessments of readiness for colleges and careers?
When it comes to, of course, that's your, your background, David, with, uh, technology, uh, and I believe Mr. Odom, the BEP Review Committee made that a priority yesterday.
It was actually moved from one to two, four, five, because the commissioner says now he's gonna make it separate from... he's gonna make a separate recommendation for that piece for a one-time allocation for just a part piece. But he's asked us to do more contemplation.
Okay. You know, I see any of those online textbooks, other computers, iPads, other incentives as tools that our kids, I feel it's necessary for us to move forward to get us up from forty-sixth in the country. We have to get inside of the new technologies that's in front of us today. In oh-four, I put together a pilot program. And I believe we used IBM. They came in with the cheapest. It was a pilot program. We used IBM tablets for two years through the Board of Regents. Board of Regents actually ran it for online. We gave laptop computers to certain students in three grand divisions that were dual enrollment kids. And we had a kid up in Spencer who was chosen for that pilot program. She had to go down to McMenville, to the Arby's where they had Wi-Fi. And she would do her online classes because she wanted to go to the University of Tennessee. So by the time she started, two years later, she had it for two years, we gave her the laptop. She started at UT with thirty-two credits already in the hopper. We have to move in that direction and start them earlier. But as far as iPads, I know we're going to iPads this year in the legislature. It's just the way things are moving. They're getting rid of the laptops and we're all going to iPads. This should be coming up soon. It all comes down to a matter of funding, you know, whether or not we can afford it.
Well, I'll say this, I don't see how we can ever fund iPads personally. But as far as textbooks online, I think it's a good idea. You know, I think I wish that universities would do the same thing, rather than a hundred, three hundred dollar textbook. You know, it just doesn't, that makes sense, you know, the cost of education being so high. But I know how long it took Commissioner Jordan back there. I know y'all got iPads now, I guess. County Commissioner, when I was a commissioner, and I guess when you were a commissioner, we didn't have laptops or iPads.
Well, Bill was commissioner, they ain't had the internet.
Had a factory.
I just don't see, in the tough times, David, I just don't see how we can ever fund that. I mean, there's so many needs out there. And I always liked what Governor Haslam said, Wayne, when he was at the Rotary Club about three years ago. He said, you know, you get the cause. And I mean, some people want the pothos big, some people want a new interchange bill, some people want a new school, some people want to raise this. And how do you fund it all, you know? And I was just at a state prison today meeting with some folks over there. And the guards are paid so low in the state of Tennessee. You're seeing so much attrition and, you know, it's just those needs. How do you balance those needs out? I know I'd just be direct and just say, I just don't see how we can ever fund things like that in this time.
I guess I would take just a little bit different point of view with my colleagues because I think it's, there's gonna be a trade-off there because obviously there are some economies of scale, some efficiency available with technology that allow you to leverage dollars that are being used, as an example, on a textbook that would be reallocated towards some technologies. So it's not like we're going to be spending money, continue to spend money on textbooks and at the same time we're duplicating that same effort with just some technologies. You see what I'm saying? I mean, you're moving away from one paradigm or one method of instructing students to another. So the dollars that you have over here for textbooks could be potentially moved over here. And because the price of textbooks is so high, it would be interesting to find out if those economies are available and if so, how efficient they are and what can we do to make that transition. Because I think there's some things there for us to do that without an overall increase in the expenditure with regards to what we're trying to do as a tool for instructing our students. I don't know the nuts and bolts answer, David. You would know better than I, but I would think they will be there.
One question and to follow up with what Joe said. In two thousand fourteen, where you have to do online...
That's our concern, and I was gonna ask you about that. Right. So correct me if I'm wrong, but we are told that we will be required to take online testing by fourteen, fifteen. We are in no way prepared to do that. What we have heard, we expected to hear at the superintendent's conference, or I expected to hear this fall, what devices we would be able to use for that online testing. So we don't even know that yet. So I'm having to take a shot in the dark in Murfreesboro about what devices we're gonna need because this is not a choice. We're gonna have to take the testing online.
It's federal law, isn't it?
Well, it's state law right now. It's because we're part of Park and the, which is the whole Common Core with forty-sixth. Well, anyway, it's a long story. But if we're gonna, my concern is, we're looking at being required to take online testing in fourteen, fifteen with no indication at all that there will be funding coming down from that. When we have asked about it, we have two answers. One is, we're not sure yet because they're gonna have to go back to Park and decide exactly what the test is gonna look like and what devices can be used. The other thing we have heard is that there, Indiana is the state, I believe, that we hear the quote about, that they were able to implement testing. And I think the quote is like eighty-five percent work without any additional funding. But I'm here to tell you that at least in Murfreesboro City, now, I would imagine you're not a whole lot richer than we are. But it's gonna, we're looking at three million, four million dollars to get the, to get the, just the equipment. We're in pretty good shape as far as wireless, but we're not sure what's gonna happen when all those kids go online testing it. And I can assure you that there are counties that are gonna be in tougher shape than we're in. So that's really our concern. It's not about online textbooks. It's about that we are being allowed to take, and online tests of which we have no, we do not have the infrastructure right now to do that.
We're aware of that. I would recommend you stay in touch with Dr. Earhart with the department. She and I have had this conversation last year. She's a former superintendent, so she understands it. She has brought it up to me. So this has gotta be addressed. I mean, some way we've gotta address it at the state level. Y'all are gonna be required to do it.
That's right.
And it's required by state law. We're gonna have to help you. We're gonna have to do it. And you're correct. I think from talking to superintendents from across the state, every LEA is in a different place. You're probably, you're in a much better place than some of our other LEAs, and I'm sure Rutherford County is also. But you're gonna have to do it. And if I remember, it is two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year.
And we will not have an answer, my understanding is, on the devices until next fall.
If you will, if you will stay in touch with us, send us an email. We will, that will be one thing that I've already addressed this summer with some of the folks at the department and administration. That's something they're gonna have to address. And there's no choice. You gotta do it. And you can't, I don't think it's fair to require the LEAs to come up with the money to do it if we're requiring it. And I think Joe's exactly right. I think there's some, if we're gonna get more and more technology, if we're gonna get more and more, there's some switch off. I mean, as far as, with using, if you're gonna go to online things, we're gonna start doing a lot of online things. There's some trade-off to see what cost and so forth. So I'm glad, that was my question. I wanted to know about that.
The current price of an online textbook by Apple, which is what it's pushing, fifteen ninety-five per year. Well, and that would be, and that's an annual fee. Now, a textbook is six years, so fifteen ninety-five, roughly ninety-six dollars. You know, you can buy a textbook for ninety-six dollars. So right now, the industry has not given much to that economy of scale. So if a child has six, seven textbooks, your cost is gonna be potentially more than what he takes us to purchase a textbook from now.
Superintendent, is the life of a textbook a part of it? Fifty-four, six years? It is six years?
That's the adoption cycle, six years.
It's six years. And so the technology companies haven't given us any incentive then, have they?
We buy the textbook now and they give us the online textbook for the child. If you choose to buy the online textbook for six years, they'll do that, but you don't get the hardback. So it's virtually, it has not been any cost-saving yet. I think that will change because California, Florida are requiring it. So it's likely something's gonna happen, but it has not happened yet. The public thinks, well, why don't you go ahead and do it? And right now, there's not a cost-saving. That's the following.
I'm gonna kinda jump in here. I'm totally in agreement with Senator Tracy and Representative Carr. I think this can be done. The airline I work for, we just went to iPads in the cockpit. And any given month, up until a month ago, we had to update, I had to update one manual just for Asia, another one for Europe, and another for South America, and another for the United States, four of them that thick, every week. And you're putting in this kind of a package full of revisions. Now I go to my iPad, I hit update, and just, I stand back and watch it. The company's got to negotiate with Apple and whatever other companies. And when they start seeing the big dollar signs coming from the states or from wherever, in this case, maybe the entire state of Tennessee, looking at converting over to iPads. And the part of the deal will be, okay, we will purchase for twenty-five dollars that textbook, but it's gonna be good for six years. That's where we'll have to make up our savings and that's where negotiations are gonna have to come in by the Education Department with these different companies if we're gonna be able to convert over. It can be done. And I tell you, it's phenomenal. It's awesome. The kids are gonna learn so much more. And we're gonna save money or the potential to save money in the long run. And then along with the testing that's gonna be required, it can also be done. It can be done. I know my company's been in negotiation for a year and a half with Jefferson Corporation. And they finally came to a conclusion because Jefferson wanted it bad enough. We were looking at another company that was coming in and possibly leaving Jefferson and going with them. Well, and all of a sudden, here comes the competition. They're willing to sit down and negotiate. So the same thing's gonna happen. Is this more and more private companies start to do this and public education as well as state governments start to get involved? I think you're gonna see more competition introduced. And this is gonna come down in price. And it's gonna be a doable thing, David, here in the very near future. But it's starting to happen. But it's gonna, I think it's gonna take work on our part as well as some patience. I don't see, you say fourteen, fifteen is the year it's gotta be?
Testing, yes.
I mean, that may be pushed back a little bit, but...
Thank you.
Before we go any further, we have another board member here, Mrs. Kaya Smith. She's a member of the Murfreesboro City Board.
Hi.
That's all right.
That's all right.
Mrs. Phillips, Mr. Bear, do either of you have a question that's down that you wanted to ask?
No, thank you. Both, they've already answered my question. I'm sorry.
Mr. Bear, number one.
Number four.
Three, three B.
Three B, yeah, three B. How will you fund, how will funding be made available after the Race to the Top program? We've already talked about Race to the Top, but you know, that's coming to expire. I just wonder if we're gonna replace that or if we're gonna have to come up with a, a shortfall.
The money has to be replaced. I can't imagine, oh, imagine anything. I shouldn't say that. That was a really stupid thing to say. Can we, can we hit control off the... David, hit the control off the... Wow. This administration is very, very committed to education. They've made it a top priority. It doesn't stand to reason, it would be unreasonable thing that they wouldn't replace or fully fund just because federal dollars are missing. They don't have a Common Core for replacing that. And I know that if, and I'm gonna be really brief, but if we're going to continue to move forward as a state where jobs are the engine that drive the economy, and I think a lot of people would agree with that metaphor. The gas that drives, that turns that engine is education. And we cannot have a great V-eight engine unless there's gas in the tank. And the gas in that tank is our school system. So we're gonna have to stick the nozzle in the tank. We have to pump some gas in there, and that's gonna cost some money. And I think everybody understands and realizes that. And it's a broad metaphor, but I think it's out. I think too, well, we're all focused. And you hear the word jobs, jobs, jobs. We want to provide as a state a great place for people to come and do business and create businesses. That's first and foremost. Secondly, it's gonna be, of course, your security, law enforcement, emergency services. And then right along, right behind that, it's gonna be public education. I think you'll find us not only as a delegation, but as the leadership in the House and the Senate. Those are our focuses. None of those are allowed to be used as political footballs. Those are our focus. That's what's gonna be funded first and foremost before you get into all this other stuff that gets, you know, thrown into the budget. And if we're short on education, and my feeling is, we fund education first, behind the other two we just talked about. Everything else comes next. What else is the role of government if we aren't taking care of one of our citizens where they have a safe place to live, a good income, and they can send their children to a good school that's safe and they're learning? The rest of it's extra.
I thank you for your sensibility to all of us. I'm also grateful that none of you have been born with a cell phone from me yet, so...
What was your number?
Most of you have heard, not all of you have heard about charter schools and vouchers on a pretty regular basis. And you've kicked that can around quite a bit tonight already. So you've already answered most of the questions that we have. But I would like to bring forth again a concern of these two elected bodies sitting here today. And that is oversight with charter schools and vouchers. And with an emphasis on these two elected bodies and oversight. And if you wanna continue to comment, we appreciate that. But if nothing else, you know, take that with you tonight because that is a concern from elected body to elected body.
I think you need to, I think we all understand, Lisa, my opinion is, our schools should be in local control, period. We'll give you the guidance, we'll give you the money, you do it. You're in touch with the students and the parents of those students, and you know what's best. Like I said earlier, I didn't know what was going on in that one bill that you called me and let me know what was going on. We don't have the pulse rate of every person in Rutherford County, Murfreesboro City Schools, particularly the parents, when it comes to education. That's your job. That's, we need to delegate that to you with micromanagement. So I think that's, I agree with you completely. You need the oversight, not only just in vouchers, but in everything else pertaining to a local school district. Real quick, Wayne, I think I was on the floor this year and there was a bill, I forgot what number it was, and I called you. And literally, it was coming up in like ten, fifteen minutes just to get your opinion. I don't know if you're comfortable with it. I forgot the name of the board. A board never can vote on online, was it? No, Wayne, not being there, they don't have...
From vote attendance, yeah.
And that was the bill I called John. And I wish Commissioner Jordan had led you. You know, one thing that I see, as a former county commissioner, there's a, you know, the state doesn't need to pass on more mandates and more compliance to the, at the local level. Because the county, the county in the next few years is gonna be under a lot of strain. I think most of y'all realize that. And I will predict the next few years, you're gonna see some municipalities and counties go bankrupt here in the state. And, you know, I borrow a quote from Governor Haslam in an inauguration speech two years ago. He quoted Thomas Friedman, who's the economist, who wrote The World's Flat. And he says, government's been the business of giving things away for all these years. And now they're gonna be the business of taking things away, if not marketplace to do for. That's why you, no disrespect, David, but you know, that's why you won't see me saying, hey, let's fund iPads. I see these things get lost on school buses. You know, I can see the private school doing that because they have parents that are gonna pick them up from school and so forth. But I'm just saying it, you know, and I hate to sound like I'm being negative. I just see things continue to get tight. And I know as an entrepreneur, we should talk about hope and optimism and all that. But I think we also have to be a realist. And I applaud Governor Haslam for being a businessman and knowing when it comes to incentivizing businesses to hire. But, you know, we get the calls, and I get the calls... know, we get the calls, and I get the calls about unemployment, I get the calls about people losing their homes, and it's, it's quite, it really plays on you as a legislator, because there's, there's a myriad of issues up there. There's thirty-four hundred bills that were introduced, and, you know, it's, it's difficult for me, because there's, there's, there are people, you just can't help them, you just, there's nothing you can do for them, you know, and, and those are people that are in my district, you know, there's people that I wish I could just hit a button and help them, but, you know, there's a lot of concerns out there for, I know, not just me, but these other legislators, because we do care about, we do care about education, but I hate to be negative, David, on the iPads situation. I'm all about technology, you know, but I think we've got to be a realist when it comes to, to fine issues. The county commissioner, the next few years, they're going to be under, they're going to be under some stress. And me, as a legislator, I don't want to put more stress at, at the local level with the decisions that I make in the national.
Wayne, I think, and you and I have had many discussions over many years, and, you know, thank all of y'all for your dedication on school board. That's probably one of the hardest elected positions there is, and I appreciate your service as a school board member. I think we're all in this same, we're public servants for a reason. You're public servants on school board to try to raise the quality of education the best you possibly can. We're very blessed in Rutherford County and Murfreesboro to have good school systems. We all know, in this room today, that the quality of education is so important, because if we know how important it is today, and Mike talked about going to some of the prisons, if you go visit the prisons, and you talk to the people in the prisons that, that have been there for a long time, and, and I've done that, I've visited most all the prisons in the state, they'll grab you by the arm and they say, Jim, you'd give these young people at least a high school education. Many of those folks in prison don't know how to read, they don't have a high school education. So we're all in this game together, the deal is, is how do we get there? We all want to raise the standards of education, we want to move forward and get students educated. And I think some of the things you're going to hear about, and I wanted to bring this up tonight, and I guess this is as good a time as any, I think you're going to hear a lot about career and technical education in the future, I think, I think we got to get back guidance counselors, doing guidance counseling, not grading tests. That's just my opinion, I meet with the guidance counselors every year, and we need to do the guidance counseling and decide, and we need to start talking about post-secondary, and utilize our technology centers that we have across the state of Tennessee, that are some of the best in the country. We got our technology centers, we got people coming in from all over the country for our technology centers. And I think we got to start preaching about that, we got to start preaching about parental involvement, and we need to be yelling it from the, as high as we can yell it, because we all know, those of us that serve as school board members in the legislature, we know that if we have an involved parent, the parents, that those children are going to do better in school, and we know if they learn to read by the end of the third grade, they're going to do much better all the way through school. So, we have big challenges, technology's changed, attention spans change, they do for me, I can, my attention span's not near where it used to be, I think we're trying to do three or four things at one time. If you think of these young people, these third and fourth graders, David, they're, they're playing with computers and doing things on the computers, and they're watching TV and doing that, and then they're texting too, all at the same time. And so the challenges are there for us, we can do it, we've got to raise the standards, and I think we got to do it in the right way, and I think one of the key things is improve our graduation rate across the state. In particular, we're challenged to do that. As legislators, we're challenged to try to raise the standards, and try to do it in a way to meet with y'all, and I think we're in a partnership with y'all, that's the way I look at it. And then we work together to try to do it, and put together a plan to do that. And I think we're trying to do that, it's a very, it's not easy to do sometimes, and so, but we're, we're working on that. But I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight, I talk all night about education. Mr. Tackett, you ought to pay a buck about education, too.
I think all of Murfreesboro City questions have been answered. Mrs. Renee, did you have one more?
There's another one that we, do you foresee any unexpected proposals, either from the governor, or the legislature, or Senate, legislator, I'm sorry, legislature or Senate, similar to the scope in which I think teachers were affected so much by taking away collective bargaining, restricting of tenure, tying so much to the test scores and everything? It seemed like those things were not really discussed prior to the election, but came about afterwards, and it wasn't just in Tennessee, it's kind of nationwide, I, I realize that, it seemed like that affected so many civil service workers, let's say. But do you foresee anything else that might come about?
I think the mood in the House is, because there have been a number of changes implemented in the last two to four years, is to just let those changes settle in, and try to work and perfect the legislation that we already established, and to make sure that we get that right, that process right. So, but at the same time, I don't want to forecast who's going to file what bill for what reasons. I mean, there are ninety-nine members of the House, thirty-three in the Senate, there's just no telling. But I'm not hearing, I haven't heard anything that would be where approached, type of change that we've been through in the last two to three years. And I would be very, very hesitant. I don't, I don't care what the change is to the present, because I think it's, once you implement change, and we did, we implemented a lot of changes, some of it was painful for a number of people, it wasn't meant to be, but it was. And I think it's time to let those changes work, to see how they're going to work, and to make sure they're working as properly intended, and then to tweak those so they're doing what they're designed to do. And you can't effectively do that if you're coming in with another radical, I don't say radical, but a large change, if that makes any sense. So, I don't think so, and I hope not. We'll see.
And I agree with that, I, I don't foresee any of that, but Joe's exactly right, when you've got a hundred and thirty-two folks, there, there's no telling what kind of bills could be filed, but I don't think there's a big movement. You know, education is something that's, it takes a while for these things to work. For example, curriculum, that was my big argument with the Tennessee Diploma Project, I was all for raising standards, but I thought they moved it too fast, and didn't change the curriculum at the fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, and eighth grade level, and then all of a sudden, and we're sort of in the middle of that right now, and students weren't prepared for that new curriculum when they got to high school. So, education, it takes about, one of my old superintendents tells me, it takes five, six, seven years to see a, a program work. So I think Joe's exactly right, I think we need to take a deep breath. Do they need to be tweaked on some of the things? Yes, but I think we've done some big things, let those things settle, and let's work together to try to, try to go forward. That's what I'm hoping, and I don't see any big, big movement to do. This will be a first year of the session, we'll have a lot of new members this year too, and that's an educational process, they got to learn to find a bathroom first, and then we move on to...
Sometimes they don't wait, though.
No, they don't.
Thank you.
I, I agree with that, I haven't heard, I think, I agree with Joe in the Senate as caucus chairman, I haven't heard from any of the members of the Senate caucus of anything drastic like that, the bills that you spoke of, or the administration bills from the governor. Now, when a governor gets elected, he has four years, maybe eight, so he comes in with a agenda, and they were new to us, and we get behind, and either buy into it or we don't, within that short period of time, but I, I don't, I haven't heard from any members. I think the governor's focus this year, from what we have heard, is higher education, because he's got two years left, maybe six, and workers' compensation. So those are two areas that I know we want to be focusing on this year, but not from K through eight, K through twelve.
I think, to add on to that, the other focus would be to reform some, or change some of the new implementations, like we talked about with the teacher, the team model, with score coming in and evaluating. They put down a whole laundry list of very good suggestions of things that need to be changed, and not all of them pertain just to the evaluation models, Common Core standards, a lot of different things that they're suggesting that needs to be changed, and Commissioner Huffman and the governor, they're very involved with that. So I think, if you see anything, it's going to come down from revising or making and tweaking, like Joe Carr was saying, that legislation is not going to pass.
Mr. Tackett?
I, I would make some comments on, about the way that it's worked, first of all, I really appreciate, and I've heard from the principal's teachers, how the evaluation system of this year has worked better. I, I'll be, will continue to consider that the times that these people have, is, is find out, it's not, you just can't keep wondering. My, my thought process always has been that, why should we have a principal dealing with a teacher that has a serious record of five, and their test scores support that? That principal, or whoever supports that, needs to be working with their first and second third year teachers, those teachers are major ones, too. So, I appreciate very much, and I've heard from the principal, very positive, I'll admit. Second, as far as charter vouchers, if you actually keep in mind is, is consider those, the key, someone made a comment, the charter schools, how there's a requirement for parent involvement. The key to a successful private school, parent involvement. Charter school, parent involvement. Magnet schools, within their own system, parent involvement. My concern, when you take those parental involved people out of those neighborhood schools, what's left with neighborhood schools? That's, that's a concern to get considered, because when charter schools protect them great parents, and you're left, you know, neighborhood schools with even less, I think, opportunities. So I think that's something that we just got to make sure we're considering in that process. Now, the question I've been asked to, to share is, is the legislature considering legislation that will give local school boards fiscal independence from county overseers?
That was the question, Coy, that you and I discussed, was it not, when we talked earlier, was it last week, earlier, this week, we had talked about that. I believe, Commissioner, that issue rose out of a single district that had some issues that were unique to that LEA, if I'm not mistaken. And I would be, this was another conversation we had at Denver, I would be, you know, I would be extremely hesitant to respond with legislation that dictated to the other hundred and thirty-plus LEAs faced at, of a single situation, that probably had more to do with the lack of people being able to get along, i.e. that the county commission has to remove in that school board than it did reflect an overall systemic problem across the state. So I'd want, I'd want to get a pretty clear understanding from Dr. Gilbert, and the Murfreesboro School Board, and Superintendent Odom, and the Rutherford County School Board, is the current situation broken that requires this town to fix? Because that's the nature of line, the five of us, soon to be six, and Don White's back there, and that guy hopes she'll join us soon though. But the, that's the question that we need to hear from you guys, that's how I look here. So, I don't think so, because the understanding I have is that came from a single situation, or so, that something that was...
I don't, I just heard from a couple of our county commissioners, where are you, where do you all stand on this?
I'll be happy to make statements about that. We're, we're elected officials, and we're the ones that make the budget, but somebody else funds it, and, you know, that doesn't seem logical to me, that another body funds what we, both as a board, to spend on educating our children. And I certainly would be, would be for us having our own autonomy system.
Are you saying, Wayne, that you want taxing authority?
That's an easy way to say it, yes.
I, I can, I will say that I would not be for that.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be drawn, because that's not what I understood, the, the nature of the question, so that was, I misunderstood the legislative intent of the question, and I apologize.
Well, I'll be honest, we got it right in question, so I'm not sure what the intent was, Wayne, we'll see.
We're off to a good start, we're being honest.
And I know we can't get into a debate here, but my position would be that, you know, if we're responsible enough to make the budget, are we not responsible enough to set the tax rate?
I'll, I'll respond...
Hopefully, that's a rhetorical question, because if not, you, you, we can't get into a debate.
And I, I'll respond probably the other way to that, frankly, I grew up in the state of Indiana, where they do have the taxing authority, there's a school tax that's there. And I, I just see our system work better here, the way it is, than what I saw in the system I came from. That's, that's very broad, and, you know, I'm talking about a system that I'm forty-two years removed from now, and in many years as well, but I, I see several things that work in our system well, to me, better than what I see there. And for example, what the cost of a, a school building here is about half of what they're building a school building for there. And I, I don't know if that has anything to do with this question or not, but there's a lot of things there that are, that are not the way I'd like to see it go.
And I would say, Wayne, I don't think that was the intent of the legislation. The intent of the legislation was not to give the school boards, local LEAs taxing authority, but to remove, to give the local government authority that did have taxing authority, the ability to line item, what your budget was in your budget. So it was taking away school board authority, not giving you authority. So, I, I could be mistaken here, the legislation that you're referring to did the inverse. And I don't think any school board would want that authority taken away, as I understand it now, you put together a budget, you send it to the governing authority to approve or disapprove, is that not correct? And they don't have the ability to line item, is that not correct?
See, that's where I'm hearing, they want the ability to line item.
The legislation would remove, it would allow the county commission then to strike those things and restructure your budget. And I just don't know that the system is broken. If it is, boy, we as a delegation need to take a serious close look at that, and we need to talk, and I'm, and I'm hopefully glad to do that.
Tim, you're from Indiana, I'm familiar with, how that works in Ohio, they have, the school boards have taxing authority as well, have for some time. However, if the school budget goes over three percent increase, it has to go referendum. And so, that way, it goes out in front of the whole public, and you can imagine what that gets you, especially in these times, it's a no, it's the few and dirty time, just like propositions are in California. The Comptroller's Office brought a bill, and I think question number six that you all had, Comptroller brought a bill this year, and they rolled it till next year, and I think we'll see that bill come back, the Comptroller's bill in 2013. Am I correct on that lead? That came from the Comptroller. Now, the Comptroller's Office and that bill that came is not requiring the county to adopt a centralized, and this is what I got from, from Comptroller's Office today, is, is not to adopt a centralized financial management act. There are currently two general acts that are similar, the County Fiscal Procedure Act of nineteen fifty-seven, and the County Financial Management Act of eighty-one. However, neither one of those acts remove budgetary authority from the elected school boards. Both acts do provide for central accounting, budgeting, and purchasing. However, the county commission can change the overall funding total appropriation amount for education. So subsequent to the adoption of a budget, the Board of Education may move funds between major categories within the budget, with the county commission approval. But from what they sent me just a little while ago, they said that the Comptroller was, they've been working on it, they've worked with interested groups that are stakeholders, county commissioners, county mayors, school boards, higher officials, other general officials, and other interested groups to draft the legislation. So I think you'll see the intent to propose the 2013 County Financial Management Act of 2013. And it will not remove any budget authority from local school boards, and will even give them greater authority over the education budget.
There's about, I was probably with five people today, the Sunday of the nineteen eighty-one act, superintendents. The issue here is, the Comptroller likes it because they do one audit, basically on a district, but the director of schools, a superintendent, serves on the budget committee of the county commission. You have a duly-elected board here, and they may send some ideas up there with them, but even though our budget may be seventy percent of the county budget, they'd have one vote on that budget committee, and that... on that budget committee, and that would be the superintendent's vote. So, I can tell you with the districts that have this nineteen eighty-one act, it's been one of the toughest things they've ever had to deal with. So, I'm categorically opposed to it myself, simply because you're removing authority from your duly elected board, who's elected by the people that's dealing with education week by week by week and placing it with a budget committee where there's one vote from the school board on it. So, you need to understand that.
Right. And I'm glad you're sharing that with us, because we need to know that. If the Comptroller's don't bring that bill back in January, we need to know how you feel about it, so we can sit down.
TSBA is opposing it, you'll hear more about that.
What, how does it take away what you're already doing?
Because now, our, the whole budget goes when our school board proposes a budget and then we present it to the commission.
Right.
And it's back to what you talked about a while ago, they can approve that figure, lower that figure, whatever it is. But, the issue that they have then is, it goes up there to the budget committee and then it to be adjusted again, then that school board's got one vote. Now, it even plays out all year long. I've talked with Superintendent today, who was going back to serve his place on that committee, on bids. He's one vote on bids. Whereas our school board, who deals with it all the time, looks at the bid and approves it or rejects it or says, "Rebid it." But, there's some, there's some real political issues involved in those cases, because you've got people that's not dealing with education that are making decisions on that. So, I think, I think it's a real help to the Comptroller's Office to do one audit, but I don't think it's an efficient way to do that.
We'll try to flesh that out. I'll ask that question, if I can take it easy.
Let me ask, on the eighty-one act, do you have any idea how many counties?
About nine, I think.
Nine, have you?
Do you have Warren County?
No.
Bedford County?
Yeah.
Bedford, Bedford has it.
Yeah.
That's two, I guess, if it closes.
How did those counties get, where they?
The legisla, the county commission votes to adopt it. They bypassed the board and adopted it because that put the legislature back to it.
They didn't have the house on board, because we did exactly what you said. We did, we decided the bids, we voted on the bids, and we rejected it or took it.
The idea is it saves positions. I heard one county tell me today that they actually had to add positions, because they kept their old budget at the school board, and then the county added up to eight or nine positions to handle that extra work that's there. But, I just think it removes the responsibility away from a duly elected school board, that has the pulse of the education system. That's my.
So, Joe and I were talking about, so you think the reason why the Comptroller wants to do this, it makes it easier for them to do the audit? Is that why?
Yes, sir, I'll step out and say that. Yes, sir, I really believe it is.
Well, that's why.
And they're going to tell you it's going to save money because of bids, but you have to realize Rutherford County is so large, we bid virtually everything anyway, so you're not going to gain for the bid process.
If there's nothing wrong with the Comptroller trying to be efficient, I mean, everybody's trying to be efficient, but this is one of those things where you've got to look at the consequences, and I just haven't seen the case of it yet.
You're adding another, in my opinion, you're adding another layer of bureaucracy and really slowing down. When you're trying to respond beneath children, you need to do that as fast as possible. And what I've heard from the superintendents that are under this, it really puts a burden on them.
We don't want that. Last of your answers.
Mr. Young, I think we, Mr. Ketchum, Senator Ketchum answered your question. I had number seven, teacher evaluation, I think all of you did a great job on answering that, so we'll move to question number eight. Mr. Odom.
Representative Carr, I think we need your help, you and I have even talked about this one, that's the bill for.
It's singled out.
Well, it's the end of course test and requiring the certification of a teacher, and it's dealing with the special education. So, literally what's happening across the state, we cannot find special education teachers that are also certified in mathematics. This year, chemistry is going to be added as a pilot for end of course test. We just, we cannot find people that will get a degree in special education and then add such a specific endorsement. So, what we do basically is inclusion, so you wind up with two teachers, you've got to have a certified math teacher there and the special ed teacher. We just need some flexibility on the special ed side.
Let me just say, Bill, I think, Bill, you carried that bill in the Senate, it's the special education certification requirement. I think you carried that out, it doesn't matter. I'm the one that worked the bill, and it wasn't the intent, and as I shared with the superintendent, it wasn't my intent to reject the superintendent, because this bill came from a teacher in Memphis and a teacher in Davidson County, where we found that across Tennessee, not counting special ed classes, SBDs, we found that there were several hundred teachers who were teaching outside their certification and they were not having taken the test, practice test, thank you very much. So, they were, they were teaching outside that, and in that, to make sure the children got the correct infrastructure in front of them, we just said, "Hey, we need to make sure that they're certified or certified competent that competes the area in the area that they're supposed to teach." And so, the, what happened was, is they include, we did provide an extension for SBDs, and quite honestly, nobody thought about it. Dr. Gilbert, this is one of those unintended consequences. You do all you can do, you think you've got it, you spend hours and hours working on it and load the hole, you get one. And I've talked to Stevens, this is another thing that I've talked to Stevens Smith about, the pushback, and it's not, it's a mild pushback, the pushback from Stevens and the Department of Education is that the greatest game, that one of the greatest areas that we can gain in student achievement scores is special education. The opportunity there for great teachers there. And he makes the argument, and it's an interesting argument, he says, "Why are we going to treat those students any different than we're going to treat any other student in classroom with regard to the requirement of teacher?" But, at the same time, you know, the pushback is because the special education teachers are teaching so many different disciplines, and to require them to be certified in all these different disciplines puts a great burden on them, an unnecessary burden, that's, of course, the law was that the Chinese do. I say all that to say that I'm working with them, I know we got an implementation date of January one. Without saying what it is, I know you've kind of got a little workaround going on, and I've shared that with the state, and they thought that was rather ingenious.
Well, you get a certified teacher there.
But, I guess, I guess we're working on it, and that wasn't the intent, but at the same time, we know that there are opportunities for student achievement, for special education to kids, and making sure that the teacher, the proper teacher's there. So, I don't have a firm answer for you, so maybe you and I, and Dr. Gilbert and I, or whoever can work on that, so we can do something about that January one, oh thirteen day, because I know it's one thing out there for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Anybody else?
Somebody else come in, please.
Did a good job. I was called now. Our last, last question tonight will be asked by Mr. Blackenship.
Are there educational changes that you feel need to be made to align Tennessee education with the future demands of the job market?
Yes. We all met Blackman High School back just past spring, CTE programs. There is a world of opportunity in our high schools with CTE and local businesses. And Senator Ketchum, I forget the name of the business, that would have built here in Rutherford County, but I believe they went down to, went down to Alabama? Birmingham. Birmingham, though, because they couldn't get educated individuals. And to set up a program like a Blackman or a Segal or Oakland to specifically train those students who want to go into a career field like that and not necessarily go to higher education, college, that's what we need. And those are some great ideas, and Blackman has some great programs going on, so there's Oakland, Segal, Riverdale. So, I think, yes, and I know, CTE program, that's one of another of my pet peeves up there at the State Department of Education, is getting kind of whacked off the knees, and that's something worth continuing to fight against. But, I think there's so much opportunity with the CTE program, especially in Rutherford County, with the number of jobs that are looking to come here and the programs that can be created with the school system and private businesses. I'd like to see us pursue that. In by twenty fourteen, two-thirds of the most popular jobs, I think, will require employees to be proficient in science and math. That's only two years away, you know, almost a year. We have a great opportunity right here in Rutherford County as a pilot. And, Mr. Odom, I think you've been involved with a group of manufacturers that have been meeting, Superintendent Carr, Senator Tracy, others, I've met with them, but these manufacturers, what, twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And then Nissan and Bridgestone have joined in.
That's, that's correct. They came on board, and they, they have been meeting for quite some time. Mr. Jimmy Davis had kind of organized all of the manufacturers and invited us out after they had been meeting. They shared with us what it's going to take to get employees into their, into their manufacturing plants. They have timelines, but they have to meet by twenty fifteen and twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five. And they know that the employees are not there to get them educated. I think Yates, who handles all the HR for Nissan, had all three of their plants. They say they lose twenty percent on the front end through drug testing, out of all those lines that line up at Career Center, and then they lose another five percent or ten percent on the back end, because kids are not, they're just not, they don't have the work ethic, and they walk off the assembly line, make a good money, have good benefits. We've got to focus on this program that these manufacturers are talking about. And I saw an article just this past week over in Knoxville that says that manufacturers and businesses are looking to hire good qualified two-year students as opposed to four-year students. Don't take them right now. And this pilot program that Megatronics, that is, I think, Dr. Spurlock has been involved with that group as well, and invited some of the manufacturers out. And I talked to Dr. Millhorn this past weekend at the UT game. UTSI is in a perfect position to create an incubator for Motlow, M-Tissue, and Bridgestone, Nissan, and all the other manufacturers in this area, and let's start bringing those kids through. However, what I would like to see, and I think needs to be changed, we need to start testing, and this came out of the group, it wasn't my idea, we need to start testing kids in the eighth grade. What's the military equivalent test?
ASVAB.
Yeah. We need to start using that test, they're saying in the eighth grade, like they're doing in Europe, as opposed to the time they're juniors. We need to know what direction those kids are going to travel by the time they come into high school. Some kids are not cut out to be four-year students in college. I know all parents want your kids to be college educated, but some have skills playing with electronics that they can do in two years, and these, these manufacturers that came out to Oakland, they took them out to their plant and said, "We'll hire you if you'll come work for us right now while you're in high school. We'll hire you as soon as you get out of college, I mean, out of the high school. Give you, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour, and we'll send you to college, but come to work for us." That's how desperate manufacturing is, and we have a great opportunity, and you, both of you, these school boards here, have a great opportunity to help us. And if we need to change the curriculum and start testing, I'm prepared to step up and do it in January. Start testing in the eighth grade, I think we need to equip them.
That same group came up with twelve scholarships for students.
They sure did.
To do the.
They sure did. I think Jimmy came up with some, Bridgestone did the other day when we had the ribbon cutting down with Motlow. We have a world of opportunity, and Dr. Millhorn at UT, he's over UTSI, he's over Oak Ridge, they've got, we've got the smartest, fastest computer in the world at Oak Ridge, we have all those capabilities right here in Tennessee with that technology, it's up to us.
And just anecdotally, we have here in Rutherford County, the Human Resources Vice President for Nissan in all the Americas, that's Canada, United States, Mexico, and South America. He's responsible for over thirty thousand employees at Nissan. And he and, he's a friend of mine, and he and I were talking, and he said, "Right now, I have unfilled certified technician positions at Nissan, making sixty thousand dollars a year. I cannot fill them." He said, "If we're constantly recruiting, trying to bring those qualified young men and women into Nissan, making, starting at sixty thousand dollars a year." I said, "Well, what's the educational requirement? We'd like for them to have a two-year associate's degree, right? We would like for them to have a two-year associate's degree or equivalent." So, the table is set for, all we have to do is find out what it is they want, and I think they're trying to tell us. So, I think what Senator Ketchum is saying is, if there are those students who have an attitude and ability with working with their hands, the financial opportunities are there, are much greater than to go get a four-year degree in Western Dance somewhere, and then they leave and wonder how they're going to make fifteen thousand dollars a year with a four-year degree in Western Dance. And there's another on Western Dance, it's not the same as.
It doesn't pay.
It doesn't pay, so.
I hope nobody in here majors in Western Dance.
I was contacted, I'm going to assume some other board members may have been, by the Chamber of Commerce, don't go out and visit with a couple of folks there, which I was glad to do, and then was invited to be part of a task force at Meets Tuesday morning. And the Chamber of Commerce made the comment to me then, and I was just, I was flabbergasted that there are so many, and they gave a number, I don't remember what it was, but it was, it was a big one. Unfilled jobs here because they can't find qualified workers, and I was just, I was taken very much aback by that. So, our Chamber of Commerce is trying to be very aggressive at fulfilling those needs, and they recognize that's why the school board members are being asked to be there, that we certainly can be part of that answer, that if our, if our county economy is to do what we want it to do, then we all have to get together and find ways to make that happen. And I think, in our situation, through our schools, we just have to get that message out better to the students, and I, and I think that idea during the eighth grade ASVAB is fabulous. I mean, I, you know, I did junior ASVAB tests for years and years and years, but never really thought about it. We're waiting too late, because I did see registering freshman parents, not students, but parents, and would reject the idea of going into CTE program because they just thought that the kid needed to go to college. We need to do a better job than ASVAB, if we had those scores and some of that evidence in place, some of these informations from the Chamber of Commerce that shows what kind of jobs are available to two-year students and so forth.
Plug them in.
That's just, it's just, it's just something that we, we have to do a better job of, and I appreciate this conversation now, it makes me very much aware, and I feel like I should be more aware than anybody, or many people that are here, that those are things that we just need to be doing, we've got to get that message out better, so students go into the right kind of things, instead of us just kind of leading them down that path or trying to suggest that they go the right way, but not have the evidence, which is clearly there, of where they need to go.
Tell us what you need, we'll, we'll make the legislature pass it if.
I think it's something that our board needs to.
Something that's.
Clearly, we've.
I think, last month, we were, Rutherford County was the fourth fastest, third fastest growing county in the country.
In jobs.
In jobs. You all need to put your hats on and get ready to go, because it's college.
One of the things that.
We've got a great opportunity.
One of the things that we've discussed tonight is about the online textbooks and how the market really hasn't responded and given it a break. In education, one of the things that we have is, we have Laverne High School that each evening has space that Motlow University uses in order to conduct classes, and we think of it as a board of education, as effectively using what the county has entrusted us in facilities, that we would want to make as much use of those facilities for the good of the county as many hours in the day as possible. And so, at no expense to Motlow, we have a partnership with them to allow them to use that area. And yet, when we try and have a student enrolled in a dual curriculum education process, where the education is actually taking place on Rutherford County school system territory, you know, our, our school in our buildings, even with our educators, we are asked to pay full tuition to that community college for those course hours. As the legislature and the governor is looking at higher education, I think that specific attention could be paid to dual curriculum opportunities, and those students that are under the age of eighteen, still enrolled in public schools, and a price consideration. If we combine BEP funding and HOPE scholarship that's available to students that are under eighteen for curriculum, we can see in Sevier County and Hamilton County and in certain places all around the state. places all around the state where students are not only graduating with thirty, thirty-two hours toward curriculum, but they're graduating from high school with associate's degrees from a partnering community college institution. That's good for students, that's good for taxpayers and it's good for Tennessee because our most outstanding, excelling students that are willing to apply themselves in the summer and take course credit in AP classes and advanced curriculum, those students then, because of what you've already passed, that any credit hour that they get in a state institution is fully transferable to any other state institution, they're not gonna go to some ID League school because those credit hours are gonna transfer most easily and most quickly to an in-state institution and they can use them here. As you look at higher education, you know, it's not exactly a question, but more a petition. I ask that you really look at the tuition expense for dual enrollment.
Good point. Thank you.
I'd like just one comment, Representative Womack. Talking about CTE programs?
Yes, sir.
I, I'll say our board last year, that was one of our top goals, the CTE program. And then we just had a retreat last Saturday and it's continuing to, to carry on with it. So I just wanted to give you that bit of information that if you look at these course offerings in some of these schools, even a new school, Stewart's Creek, you'll see some pretty interesting courses that are out there.
It's phenomenal. I mean, I wish we had had that when I went to school. I couldn't believe what Blackman, how you were there that day. And it's, it is incredible and be able to, you've already got it in place, expand on it. And like we said, you're gonna have a lot of business come with this county, Tennessee as a whole, but particularly Rutherford County, middle Tennessee. We've got a goldmine opportunity to expand that program.
I think we'll try to continue to grow on it also. I appreciate each one of you coming tonight and I think you've provided all of us a lot of information. I know you've helped me to understand a lot of these issues, a lot of these questions we're dealt with, so I just want to say thank you to all of you. Ms. Wade, do you have any comments?
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Wade, you've got one board member that's watching us on the internet. He's not actually here. Butch Campbell, one of your board members.
Butch is texting us. Man, a couple of questions for Butch. I'm not gonna ask a question to myself. I'm already calling.
Janie will need to medicate. But we certainly are appreciative of the invitation that was extended and with the board members that wanted to have this joint meeting. It has been very informative for us, very much. So we have a great director that works very hard.
You do.
Keeps up with all of this for us, but we're gonna have to get in there and join her and send a few emails and texts. We'll have to get that from Mr. Campbell.
He does it very well, believe me.
Yes. And I thank Mr. Odom and Mr. Harden, the county board, for extending this and we've had a great time, at least I have, and I've been looking around at the other board members and we have been, they've had a great time.
Well, I just want to say that this idea was born out of the fact that this delegation on a regular basis, when we're in session, meets with the Chamber of Commerce and it was, we've been doing that for a couple of years now and it's worked so well. And this delegation, honestly, more so than any other delegation in the state of Tennessee, county delegation, really prides itself on working together and it gives you guys, Murphersville Schools, Rutherford County Schools, a real opportunity to have real relevant input in the legislative process. And so I, I hope, I won't speak for anybody else, but I hope that we can, this could start something that we do on an ongoing basis because I think this honest and open dialogue can only be beneficial to improving education in Rutherford County and Rutherford County Public School.
And keep in touch with us. Continue to, I mean, I'm serious. Email us. If you've heard something, chances are we have. So let us know. Keep the lines of communication open.
That's the bottom line. We're here to improve education. That's what we're all here to do. And I just like to see us, like I said, continue to work together, do whatever it takes. Now, there is gonna be a cost associated with this. The funding's gotta come. That's either from a federal level, state level or county level. Taxpayers are gonna feel it one way or the other. If we mandate, then we're gonna make some improvements. So everybody needs to keep that in the back of their mind, too.
We're, we're gonna ask, there's an article in the Land and Cover, DHA, about bathroom and I guess the bathroom components in schools. I just wanted to ask the board, what's being done at Murphersville Schools and county schools as far as educating kids about the harmful effects of drugs? Jim talked about the prisons, I mean, sixty-seven percent of the prisoners, you know, is drug or alcohol related is why, is why they're in there, you know? What is being done?
One of, one of our best partnerships is with the Murphersville Police Department. We've had an ongoing partnership with them and it gets stronger all the time. We have the DARE program, we also have the GRAPE program. And that particular school, the officer was right there, was able to take care of it. And I was in a meeting today with some of our counselors and they were really applauding the partnership we have. For us, our secret of success is, is not just the great teachers, but it's also the partnerships we have in the community. And we have partnerships that allow us to have family resource learning centers and housing projects where we have thirty to sixty kids that are being tutored every day. We have a great relationship with our, our Hispanic community and we're building a strong relationship with our Arabic community. So for us, it's a matter of changing our focus over the last couple of years, really to the whole child, so that now we do have social workers in the schools, we do have a GRAPE program in the schools, we do have an ongoing relationship with Murphersville Housing Authority and I could name all the, all of the agencies that we have. But I think in working with the parents, it is also working with, with that whole community to bring all of the resources. And I know that Rutherford County does the same thing, but very, very strong partnerships, just as you have a strong partnership with us, we have a very strong partnership with our community and all of the social services. And so that's, that's been a tremendous blessing because when something like that occurs, it allows you immediate response. And not all school districts are that fortunate, but immediately the police were right there with us, helping us with that. And so there's an ongoing, in addition to the community partners, remember that there's also the mentoring programs that are going that are much stronger than they have been. So it's really been a blessing the last couple of years to see those partnerships expand because they impact on what we're trying to do. We're responsible for academics, but we know that the academics won't happen unless you have a hard child there. And so we're really focusing on that.
We have Respect and Protect, which is one program which the counselors and schools do with students, and of course, the SRO program, so we really do.
Do y'all allow the Canines to pepper service?
We do.
That's just random checks?
We do. I mean, we, we, I've received one request possibly this year in a school, so we take a look at that periodically today.
Thank you.
Yeah. I wanna, I too want to thank you tonight for coming, Murphersville City Board and everyone else. And I'm gonna end with a commercial message and the commercial message is kinda like when your news show goes off or something. As you go out the door, please look over your shoulder, the State Department of Education delivered to us the exemplary school banner last Friday and it's on display over the board. Thank Murphersville City Schools, they're a partner with us. We get, we get their students and working together, so take a look at it as well.
And you approve of this.
If nothing else, square a joint.